Go ahead and open up our work session for May 1st, 2018. Welcome, everybody, and please silence or shut off your cell phone if you would please, and join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the very public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, we need power now. Okay, uh... Sorry? No power.
Is it on in the back?
We're expecting big change technical difficulties. All right, um, we do have some additions. I'll ask Mel to go over the additions, please.
Sure. We have a support letter for the airport infrastructure fund application, a support letter for the Lake County water shed council, and house bill 3492. Please do your act.
Okay. Uh, question, any other additions or deletions?
No, as much as Mr. Knowles won't do those today, are we just gonna go ahead and scratch that today because it's on tomorrow's agenda and we'll let him present?
That would be good.
Okay, and then actually, um, Steve Burman also needs to bring up a contract lease or disagreeing with.
Oh, that's right, yes. Uh, incubator contract.
For the hospital, he's being viewed at building. And Steve Brown has a couple of words he'd like to say before we get started.
Is he gonna be held to a couple?
He said it'd be fast.
Okay.
All right, so with that said, Mr. Brown?
Thank you. I just wanted to bring your attention, next week, May 7th through the 13th is National Correctional Employees Week.
You're taking my thunder.
I'm sorry. I gave a copy of the governor's proclamation to Melanie. She said you guys will read it with the record tomorrow. Um, and just a couple, uh, opportunities for the public to join us. Monday at nine o'clock, we will have the Oregon Department of Corrections on our guard at Warner Creek to perform the flag raising ceremony. Everybody's welcome to attend if you'd like. Also on Tuesday at nine o'clock in the morning is the employee awards and recognition meeting. We'll have a couple of our executive team members, assistant directors from Salem there. We'd love to invite the commissioners to attend that also if you wish. And then the rest of the week, the rest of the week is filled with activities for the employees to recognize the great work that our correctional staff do, not only at Warner Creek, but all over Oregon and the state and the nation. Thanks.
Great.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Yep. All right, so moving on down, we'll, uh, 901, I invite him, our Freeman's late, uh, employee bathroom possibility. I believe that's you, Stacy?
That's me. It's kind of a delicate situation, but, um, we've been having issues with the bathrooms on our floor here over there for a while. Um, we have a lot of public that come in and out and use those restrooms. Mondays are a particularly busy day for them, and I just think it's something that maybe we could think about where employees have a restroom, two restrooms, whatever you think, that is just for our use, that we can get into when we need to get into, and they're not a mess. Because Junior could tell you horror stories about some of the messes in these bathrooms, and you can't avoid that when you have the public using restrooms. It happens, whether it's an accident or whatever. And I just would like to see something done, and it would be nice if we could get some fans or something in both of these restrooms. That might help part of the situation, I don't know. But, um, I can tell you I am not the only one who feels this way, and I thought there might be a few more people here today, and maybe we need to have another meeting later and discuss some possibilities or suggestions, but I just kinda wanted you guys to be aware there's a problem. And I'm sure there's a way to fix it, an easy way, but we might have to talk about that at another date.
So, I might just throw out this idea, and I know Stacy, you and Dave have talked, but our building official is here as well today, and maybe there could be a small group that got together and talked about what options there are and how we might be able to accomplish the needs of not only the public, but our employees, and then come back with a proposal to the board.
Okay, we can do that.
Yeah.
That's a, we gotta start somewhere, so we can do that.
Sure. Okay.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Kevin Hock, uh, landfill on track.
Mr. Kevin Hopalong.
Yep. Hockalong, Deb.
Morning.
Morning.
Coming up. Which, which one do you wanna?
Got landfill first.
Okay.
Where are you, Kevin?
So, in review, um, several meetings ago, um, had concurrence from the commissioners. We could look into the operations versus contract for the Lake County landfill because in September there will be contract renewal. So, in front of you, I hope, is some summary of that. Um, Lake County has the permit holder solely responsible for the landfill. No matter what takes place out there, um, because it's on Lake County property and we are the management facility, everything falls onto Lake County for that. General Fund pays for, through the budget pays for all of the testing, monitoring, DEQ communications, recycling quantities, reports, coordination of events, capital improvements, quarterly reporting, financial assurance, which is, um...
That's mandated by the state.
Yep, has to be, um, through the permit. Discharge monitoring ports and, uh, stormwater analysis. Along the stormwater analysis goes ties in with capital improvements because all the erosion control, all of the sediment control, everything that, that, um, is part of the, um, what they call 1,200Z permit, general permit, for us to be able to discharge water offsite has to be clean, tested, analytics, so forth. Um, there would need to be, um, some fairly significant investment for equipment, compactor, excavator, roll-off containers, and scales. Scales would most likely greatly improve how we control and how we collect information that goes into landfill. Right now, there's solid waste that gets disposed at satellite sites or convenience centers that is just generally, uh, ballpark yardage. So, we could control the scales, um, all of the tonnage, which directly impacts us, our fees, and DEQ information because we report all that quarterly.
Well, Kevin, if you don't mind me jumping in here, you just mentioned satellite sites, and we're used to calling them transfer stations, but regardless, we have a number of those throughout, throughout the county, so just for the record, we're, we're talking about, when we say landfill operations, we're talking about all of this.
Correct.
So that there's no mistake, we're not just talking about the actual landfill out here.
Yep. Silver Lake, Fort Rock, Paisley, um, convenience centers or transfer stations commonly discussed.
It's kinda like yard rooms.
Yep.
Gotcha.
In Christmas Valley.
Yeah.
Um, employees for staffing, at a minimum, would need three employees at Lakeview here at this, uh, facility. One employee in Paisley and one employee in the North Lake that could monitor and receive solid waste and transfer in Christmas Valley, Silver Lake, and Fort Rock. So, utilizing the current year's totals, or the last reporting year's total of 62, 153-ton landfill could support itself with no additional funds from the general fund that is already being used. There is, um, over the course of time, this may be reduced, um, with the install of scales and more specific, um, collection of those quantities, um, at the rate per ton, um, we have more specific control over all of that. Looking at, uh, past consult reporting that was prepared by, um, a consultant URS in July of, um, 2005, um, Lake County needs to look at more specific fee minimums, um, some different ideas for limits, um, cost of fluff, the furniture, mattress, things of that nature, and electronic devices. So, in trying to research as much information as possible, I went to surrounding counties as well to see the cost of solid waste in comparison to what we are at $70 per ton, some being as high as $74, some being as high as $78 per ton. So, the ultimate goal here is, you guys know this as well, is to keep solid waste costs as low as possible here in Lake County. So, in closing, Lake County can maintain the current cost of $70 per ton with internal operations utilizing current revenue, and potentially over time with more ability to document the specific tonnages, minimizing the contribution from the general fund to subsized landfill.
Well, my first, my first comment, Kevin, is, you know, it's been a while back, and we gave you direction to go ahead and look into this, and I just want to thank you and your staff, Christie's here, uh, for the time and effort you've put into doing all of this analysis. It wasn't really a small task, and covering past records and processes, et cetera, uh, but quite frankly, I think we're on the right track. Uh, I think, uh, not only with the changeover and the future of the landfill site, but just operationally, because we all know that we can't pass on, like many things that we're responsible for, we can't pass on the responsibility that we have to DEQ and these sites, and so there's a lot of, I think, a lot of value in being able to control that. And quite frankly, once again, uh, I like the idea that, uh, at any time, whether it's announced or unannounced, the DEQ would come in and do an inspection, or our compliance, that we would be in compliance, and that is a real step in the right direction, not, not to mention all of the other beneficial aspects. So, mostly, I just wanted to thank you and Christie for all the work you've put into this.
I concur, especially the amount of work Christie and you have put into this. Appreciate that. And as, as we've all worked hard to, uh, on the landfill, proposed new landfill, as we get that permit and everything, and with the compliance that we wanna stay within and everything, the day has come to stay within compliance for the citizens of Lake County to still have a landfill here. If we ever get to where we have to transfer it out, the cost to the citizens is gonna go extremely high.
Gotcha.
So, um, as a new site is being developed and everything, to stay in compliance in all inspections and everything, uh, we're responsible for that anyways, and it needs to be operated at that level professionally and, uh, in compliance, and as Commissioner Towns said, if DEQ wants to come, they should come anytime, and we should be in compliance.
Well, anytime.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
And that's where I'm at. I appreciate the hard work. It is on the agenda for tomorrow for us to have action consideration. Um, obviously, you can tell where I'm at, and I'm ready to go forward with it, and just, uh, I'm actually very excited where we're going with our landfill for our citizens and for taxpayers. It's, it's a good thing.
No, that's exactly right. One other little quick comment, as you were talking about, you know, the operations out there, or at any of our sites. I think we just need to put on the record, uh, and we shouldn't shy away from it. There's a bunch of costs that have been hidden to the county, and we're not going to add those, and I don't mean that in a, in a, uh, someone intentionally did something, but we all know that a lot of the compliance issues, we have taken care of when we've won the cost of those. Uh, and going forward, we'll have that responsibility, and it'll be real upfront, and it'll be built into our budget and part of our operational, day-to-day activities.
And increasingly so, the more that we work with DEQ, the more regulation, there won't be less, there will always be more. So, we have a site that is being approved for permit for 66-plus years, and we need to maximize that opportunity for this town.
Yep.
Okay.
Very good. Mr. Hock, your next item is to walk through the Forest Road Agreement. We've been waiting a while for this, Forest Service, I mean.
Touched, touched base on this, uh, some time ago, just so that you, um, knew it was coming. Um, the first agreement is in your, was a draft. Um, there are specifics in that draft, um, that the Forest Service and myself, she, Shay Pogomalski, the Forest Service engineer, wanted to be here today, but I just got a text that she was called off on something else, so, um, we have been coordinating, um, to see how best it suits the Forest Service to complete their repair of their section of Dog Lake, uh, just, uh, just below the lake, uh, that was rehabbed over the winter and last fall. So, there is sheets there showing direct costs. Um, ultimately, it ends up being plus or minus $90,000 worth of work that the Forest Service has asked Lake County Road Department to enter into agreement with so that we can help them finish that, which includes some minor base repairs, um, a little bit of widening, um, in a section that wasn't done under their existing contract to try to get an 18-foot lane or two 9-foot lanes, one 18-foot lane asphalt. Um, it seems sensible to me that we do this because we are already there, we will be coordinating with the Blacktop plant when we pave our section, and I don't believe this will put us out in any way that we can't help them get this taken care of for the public.
Our equip, our equipment's already there, we're working in the area.
It's the right thing to do.
So, um, there is, the first part is a draft because when we had a site visit with FHWA, there was some things that, um, we talked about us installing a little bit of riprap and installing, um, some shoulders, a little bit of shoulder widening that's not in this first draft, and Shay and I will clean that up and then we'll bring it back to you, but so you're aware of what we're doing. The second part of this is page 1 through 7. This is just a general cooperative agreement that, um, could be signed so that we can move forward with some more specific agreement.
Okay, so, so we could approve, um, the project agreement tomorrow and sign that, page 1 through 7, and then other...
We'll bring that to you, but we need to specifically document. I, I gave her the quantities, um, that we discussed on site up there, and I don't, it was a week or so ago.
Probably, what we'll do is probably approve the whole thing without no sign, uh, sign of, or signature of the last one, um, until...
Yes.
And then, and when you get it together, we, we wouldn't have to come back to another meeting.
The cooperative, the cooperative Forest Service agreement, page 1 through 7, is the, is the agreement that says we can enter into other agreements, basically, so, um, and, uh, we have, um, Christie had forwarded this to our legal, so that's a just review, and that's, it's just a generalized cooperative agreement so that we can enter into something more specific than we were supposed to.
Okay.
Yep.
Very good. Got that for tomorrow, so...
One, one last, I guess, update if I can, on here.
Yep.
Um, the, our, uh, office assistant has, Christie Horn has, um, put a lot of time into working with paint care to get a paint care drop for Christmas Valley, and that will be on June 1st at the JW Kerns Irrigation Lot. Um, it'll be between 8:00 and noon, which, this information's been advertised, and we put out some flyers at post offices, different things the other day, but thought it was worth noting here so that people are aware of it. This is a good thing for, for North Lake. Um, last fall had a electronic device drop available to them. That won't be part of this paint care, and then we will try to, over time, incorporate so that they're on the same day. So, that'll be June 1st, and then June 2nd will be here at the department, um, between 9:00 AM and 2:00. So, again, these, these things are all advertised, local papers, flyers, and so forth, post offices.
So, I know last fall, Christie said it was very successful on the electronics collection. The citizens up there were very pleased that we were able to do that, and Christie, as Kevin mentioned, thank you very much for arranging this. Um, it's gonna be a really nice thing to be able to do in both ends of the count, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
Kevin?
And there, I don't see the need for Kevin to come tomorrow.
Oh, I like seeing Paul. Can you come back tomorrow if need be?
I, I don't see...
No, I don't think he does either. I, I don't know that anybody would be here with any questions about the landfill, but we, we pretty well know, so...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. All right. Budget Officer, Andrew Drummer.
Morning, Anne.
Good morning.
All right, a few resolutions for you this morning. Um, the first, really, we haven't had too many yet this year, so these numbers are pretty low. Uh, 2017-08 is for the Fair Board Fund. Um, they ended up having more local revenues and resources come in than anticipated, but they don't have more capital expenditures than anticipated because some projects weren't complete by June 30th. They are being finished up in this fiscal year. So, this resolution increases local resources by 28,000, increases materials and services a small amount at 5,000, and then capital at 23,000. The reason the materials and services had to increase was assuming the Carnival contract from the Roundup Association, there were some unknowns about how that actually was processed, and we were showing the true cost of that contract and the true revenues, um, and so it increased that Carnival contract in materials and services.
Okay, and then the 23 in capital, I know it's gonna be quite that much, but it's...
So, um, you should have some documents behind that resolution that talks about the projects they worked on this fiscal year. The, uh, the HVAC system, the food court, ship sealing and paving, the north end door to that exhibit building, and then finishing the restroom. The restroom cost, um, because it's not complete yet, continue to rise. I am.
So, so I guess, question, I do have a fair working meeting tonight, so I...
Great.
So, I have a question, Anne, on the, on the north door, we had, through budget time last year, mentioned sort of contingency on that. Is this 23 cover of that, or does it say here, is she gonna, are we going to contingency for that?
No, because they have enough available in local resources, so we're coming, we're not gonna do a contingency change at all.
Okay.
What, what I don't have total information on is what that final cost of that restroom's gonna be. I've been trying to get, uh, more clarity on a good estimate, I don't have it quite yet, so if need be, we may have to go to contingency depending on the final cost of that.
Okay. That helps me, right?
A lot of good work and improvements happening out there, so it's nice to see, and again, nice to see that they could fund some of them in the results. 2017-09 is for the Veteran Services Fund. Um, remember with the increase in state funding, we were able to purchase a vehicle, uh, solely for veteran service use. The quote and estimate for that vehicle was a little bit low, so the actual cost, once the vehicle was fully outfitted, um, increased. So, this resolution, uh, increases capital by $4,000 and decreases personnel services by $4,000. We have a temp, well, we have a part-time position that hasn't been filled yet, but was budgeted for half of the year. So, there's some savings in personnel services that can be used on the capital expenditure.
So, this resolution will remove that from category to other...
Yeah, it's an appropriation transfer, so overall expenditures remain the same, just decreasing materials and services and increasing capital.
Thank you.
2017-10 is the same type of scenario. It's an appropriation transfer into jail. They budgeted the purchase at copier. Um, again, the estimate for that copier purchase was less than what the actual cost was. Uh, they need $2,100 more in capital appropriation authority, but they have savings in materials and services for $2,100. So, again, the overall total expenditures stay the same at $1.1 million. Um, the increase in capital is needed, and there can be an increase in materials and services.
So, not a question to you, but a question to Melanie, it may be before your time. Was that copier part of our copier program we're moving over to, till they're more unified?
Yes.
That's, I think, canon, that's the, that...
Yeah, um, our last invoice, everything was lumped under one, so that was beneficial, and we're on track to getting everything rolled down.
Okay, thank you.
I'm so happy to hear we're moving in that direction. Um, the, the time and energy it takes to manage several different lease contracts and purchase contracts and make the payments on them, some of them are monthly payments. You could see the amount of checks that you write just to copy the services. So, I, I really like the direction we're headed. Um, we can even streamline it, just like we did the phones, and it can be one payment quarterly or whatever, and we can recoup those costs outside funds through the admin. Um, it really, we really need to be as cost efficient as possible with that service that we're having all our departments use. So, the sec, this next, um, resolution is the same thing that in the sheriff's office, uh, 2017-11, again, appropriation transfer, they needed additional capital dollars for a copier purchase, um, and they have materials and services savings. So, overall total expenditures stay the same at $1.1 million. Increase capital $2,100, and like I said, decrease materials and services $2,100.
Did you say the other one, that's one point, almost 113, it stays the same, and then the jail, it's...
About 1.1.
1.15.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'd seen those numbers, too.
So, about 2.3, below 2.2.
Or 3.7, I think. Um, 2017-12 is again an appropriation transfer for our marine enforcement grant. This is a small grant that allows our sheriff's department to inspect and, um, inspect marine and boat equipment, and then also provide enforcement services on lakes and things like that. So, anytime they come close to, uh, going over a category, we're custody them quickly. They, uh, need an increase in materials and services that can save money and salaries, so it's an increase of $500 for materials and services, and then the salary decrease of $500. 2017-13 is another appropriation transfer for our public health department. Um, they had to pay for vac, they'll end up paying for five quarters of vaccination purchases through the state in this fiscal year. So, the timing of that, um, fourth quarter payment from the prior fiscal year kind of messed us up a little bit. messed us up a little bit. The good news is, is they have, um, with staff turnover, they have savings in salaries. So they can cover this additional cost in materials and services through a salaries, increase their salary savings. Right, and it's, it's thirty thousand dollars. Their total expenditures remain the same at six hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars. Materials and services increase thirty thousand and salaries decrease thirty thousand. Twenty seventeen dash fourteen is for our special transportation fund. Uh, they will have more revenue than anticipated, um, more grant dollars came through, um, that, from the state. And then we also will be paying out more for contract services. So this fund, um, increases forty-five thousand. Uh, state resources increase forty-five thousand and then materials and services increases forty-five thousand. Total expenditures go from two hundred and ninety-nine thousand to three hundred and forty-four thousand. Through this process, um, Melanie and I are trying to, um, gather a lot more information and, and contracts and, um, getting the numbers to really kind of jive at the end. So it's been a good process for both of us to understand a little bit more about our service providers and their billing process and things like that.
So, just a question. The revenue went up, I anticipated, but our contract costs went up?
So, they've been offering more services than they should have been. They have so much money per biennium. This is taking money from this next deep fiscal year, so they're gonna have to tighten their purse strings this next year to compensate for what they've been doing.
Copy.
Yeah.
And we'll, we'll watch that. Um, I think, I have a little bit more understanding, so I can be hopeful watching this soon. Melanie continues to get more information from the state and from the service providers, so I think, yeah, we'll watch it.
Well, I'm trying to follow, this is additional forty-five thousand dollars increase in state resources. Forty-one, four forty-one is going to the senior contract, correct? If I'm reading this right, is, I, I know that it's biennium. Does that follow all the rules and the percentages that, um, the committee and everybody's approved? Or is it just like you said, it's a reduction of next year's amount to stay within that? Because this is, this is above and beyond revenue, then I thought that we were supposed to allocate that and get new revenue and have a meeting and allocate that out.
Um, I had a committee meeting last week. Um, we discussed their budget and do they have a new budget starting from this month on, on how they can keep their cost in control without exceeding their funding from the state?
So the other providers...
They will not be impacted by this. They're right on track.
They're right on track, but they're not gaining any new revenues. All the new revenues are going to one provider. And that's where my, my...
Let, let me clarify a little bit. I would say this is not new revenue.
No.
It's not necessarily a new revenue, it's just we're getting it earlier in the biennium than we had planned them. But, and before Denise left, she had said it's possible that this fund would need a resolution on, on grant funding. So it's, it's still the same allocation the state gives us for the biennium, we're just expending it a little bit faster.
Oh, okay, because when it says increase, the state resources increase by, I take that as more...
For this, for this fiscal year.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Yes.
Well, it's nice that all these resolutions do, do end up zeroing.
Yeah. So, there's unanticipated revenue in a few funds, that's nice to see and be able to utilize that for the most part, managers can save in other areas to make.
Yeah, I mean, you know, we don't have to probably go back in time, but twelve years ago, what we were doing is, it was a, it was actually a need. So, it's nice when these come before us this way. Thank you, Ann.
Thanks, Ken. Back tomorrow. Uh, Mr. Collins, you're up next.
Insurance Committee met this last week and I'll give you just a quick update on insurance in general. Every year we shop our insurance around, um, see if there's a, any other competitor bid or competitive bids. Um, again, this year, nobody is even willing to give us a quote because they can't beat, they can't beat what we have at City County Insurance. Um, we feel like we're in pretty good shape here. We have, it's a middle-of-the-road plan, it's not, it's not a Cadillac plan by any means. It's five hundred dollar deductible, so you end up paying some out-of-pocket costs every year. But what this, what's good about this insurance is the maximum out-of-pocket, out-of-pocket as well. So, it kind of accomplishes what you want to do with insurance. Insure for those big losses. It's not gonna pay everything along the way, but, uh, you know, you're not gonna have huge out-of-pocket costs. So, what we talked about this week, we got a new proposal from an air ambulance service. Our, our current air ambulance service is just air and it's, um, mostly for this area. They are a nationwide network, but they have areas where there, there's great coverage and they have areas where there's poor coverage.
Jay, before you go on...
Yeah.
We're clearly talking about two things here, what you started out with...
Yeah.
And then now the air ambulance service, correct?
Correct. Yeah, in fact, this, um, this air ambulance service isn't insurance. It, it's an agreement that these, um, companies have that says, "We will accept in full whatever we can collect from your insurance and we won't come after you for the rest."
Yeah.
Um, these flights end up being, I don't think we've had one in the past few years that's been under thirty thousand dollars and we've had a few that have been over seventy. So, it's a huge cost. Those are the kind of bills that people can't, can't, there's no way that they manage this. They're gonna go bankrupt. So, every time a helicopter flies out of here, you know, we have some concern that that could happen. If, if a carrier that is not in our network, our AirMed care network, flies someone out, if they're flying to California or somewhere in person, um, they're gonna end up with a bill. The network has improved greatly in the past few years. This area is really good. We have just, AirMed has bought out all the competitors in this area, nearly all the competitors. If we're gonna declare to fly to Reno, there's, there's a decent chance you'd be flying out, flown out by somebody other than in our network. And most of the time in those situations, you don't really have a choice. Um, if it's an emergency, they're gonna fly you, like who's, who's able to get here and clear the network is tied up or if somebody can be faster or...
Central or Lakerdale.
Yeah, that's what it is. Lakerdale decisions here. So, what the insurance committee's proposing is, this new plan with MASA would cover any employee anywhere in the United States by any carrier and not just for air, but also for ground. So, it would completely, you know, we've come a long ways in the last few years. We've, we've tightened up this coverage, it's made better, but this would be the final step. And right now we have a hundred dollars budgeted. Um, it would be a hundred and sixty dollars per employee. We have eighty-five employees, so it's about fifty-one hundred dollars would be the cost.
So, and you and I chatted about this yesterday. I, I think it's a great thing. A lot of times we think the only time we're gonna have a need is right here in River City. Uh, we don't think about our travels and so this does take away that, uh, concern and anxiety for anybody that's out there. You know, a lot of times people end up needing to be airlifted somewhere outside of Lake County, maybe outside of the state of Oregon through no fault of their own. And, you know, something, one of the comments you made earlier, Jay, you know, if it's a massive heart attack, the last thing we need to do to one of our employees is somehow get the bill arrived before they're actually released and then becomes an even more massive heart attack when they see it's seventy thousand dollars. But I'm gonna say something on the record, because I'm going into private citizenry pretty quick, uh, eight months or so. I'm gonna, because I think sometimes it gets lost and I appreciate what you said about not a Cadillac plan on the insurance side, but even on the air life services. I think you, I think when, I, 'cause I asked you to look, you know, as, 'cause I wouldn't be part of a group plan after January one. So, that hundred and sixty pales in comparison to the four eighty?
Four sixty.
Four sixty, that I will pay for the same service that we're providing for our...
Not for the same service. Um, our employees would have that option also to upgrade to the platinum plan.
And that's the only plan that you could give to.
Yeah, as an individual, that's the only plan you could have. You can't be part of our group.
My point is, is that over the last number of years, we've done everything in our power within our financial means to do as much as we can because we absolutely positively think the world of our employees. And I wanna go back to the insurance side of things. I'm fully insured privately. I pay more on a monthly premium and it's not about me, but I'm just, to me, it is a Cadillac plan, relatively speaking. I pay more out-of-pocket for a deductible. Fortunately, we've been healthy. So I just would like to say that out there because sometimes it just becomes assumed, these benefits, and, uh, they're not as good as they could be. But I hear in all this, I'm going, wait a minute, folks, uh, in the private in, world, if you're paying for this, it's a whole lot now, so. Anyway, sorry about editorializing, but it was something that I...
No, yeah, I hadn't really addressed that. The employees would have an option to, um, upgrade to that platinum plan, so we, we, the county would pay that first hundred and sixty. They, if they wanted that Cadillac or that platinum plan, then they would pay the extra three hundred dollars. That would cover them anywhere in the world. There's a lot of other benefits associated with that.
So, Jay, um, you know, I'm very supportive of this. I brought it back from AOC last year, actually, to you. So the insurance committee, as you meet on this and, um, within our contractual agreements with the bargaining units and everything, um, was there any talk of staying where we're at and if somebody wanted to upgrade, they pay the difference or any recommendations that way? Did you have that discussion?
Yeah.
Once, once we start doing things and sometimes they get written into bargaining units, um, and, and different things like that. So, um, I'm in support of this, but sometimes there's options given to employees as we pay the base and if you wanna upgrade to this one, then you pay that and different things. Just for a little bit of discussion, did you guys have, go down those paths and you know?
We did, and that won't be possible. The reason we can get a, a group plan like this is because the entire group would have to recover. Um, so they wouldn't be able to do that. The only, the only option an employee would have would be to upgrade the platinum plan.
I just wanted to make sure that was, was out there as for the impact bargaining units and everything like that.
Yeah, so that, that we, that the insurance committee thoroughly went through and looked at this before it's brought to the board. So that's definitely a consideration. You know, we, we are contractually obligated to provide air ambulance service. What this is, it's, is it's air and ground. That's, you know, that could be part of our negotiations next year.
All right. Thanks for answering that question. I already knew the answer, this one is on your...
Got you. Yeah, please.
So if you want any more information between now and tomorrow?
I'm, I'm good.
I'm good. All right. Thanks, Jay.
Mr. Johnson, you're next, sir. Non-disturbance agreement, this has to do with Newson Energy.
Hi, Darrell. How you doing? Good morning. Uh, Newson Energy is a solar company that's looking to develop a few projects in the middle of the county and they've, uh, done their research and found there are a few areas that have mineral rights that, for financing purposes, um, you recall that, that other solar companies have asked, mainly Obsidian has asked to, to have those mineral rights transferred back to the county. That process is very lengthy in time because all the work has to be done by geologists and reporting and noticing and all that. So, um, they are comfortable with, uh, these non-distributes agreements, which cover the life of the project. Just mainly saying that we're not going to disturb the ground to try to get any minerals off there while they have, uh, these solar projects built and, and in operation. So, um, just follows that time period and, um, legal counsel's gone over this. I didn't see anything back from him other than the fact that, um, the example that you were given is pretty much the word for, the ingredients that we previously entered into with Obsidian and that we'll just fill in the blanks with this, with Newson. So, um, Jim actually, his comment was, probably already done this, so, um, that's because it is the same language and so we should feel comfortable agreeing to this and it's my recommendation that we do. They, again, have given you draft template agreement to review and that would then be used for multiple different project sites and locations that we have. So, as those come forward, I think it's appropriate that we address each one of those as they come and have the, the projects actually, um, in the record fully with all the details in the actual agreement, but pretty much we're, this is a template that we would use for their projects moving forward.
Well, the, as these solar projects, which are quite big projects, take in a lot of grounds and different things. And as we're learning through this process, obviously, um, we have had, actually, a place of Obsidian spending quite a bit of expense and determining whether, what, there was any value mineral such as, um, property. So we, we certainly need to be consistent. This type here doesn't require that at all. This is just a guarantee they're not gonna do anything. We retain the mineral rights and everything until, and they won't do anything for the life of the project, or we won't do anything for the life of the project.
So what, if I can jump in there, is that, that Obsidian originally thought that they wanted to acquire those mineral rights and purchase them outright for their financing purposes, for their products. Then when they went through that project, they had five locations, if I recall, and two were no, uh, you know, minerals found of, of any significant value, so then we in, we actually sold them those. It took, it was like August through March or something like that, a couple years back now. So, those we sold, but then those other three, there was some kind of value found and so on those, and that's when the original, oh, let's imagine this non-distributes agreement. And so, Obsidian was the original kind of big, so to speak, company that had to kind of figure out what was in order for them. And then, uh, for their financing purposes, the non-distributes agreement worked and so that's why Newson's kind of going this direction as well. So they're not, they're not asking to purchase them, they're just saying, let's, let's just go this way. It's the easiest, most, you know, appropriate, I feel, way because, you know, you guys had to determine on that, you know, from the geologist's report, you know, is this value significant and should we be interested in keeping it? Again, it's a, it's a huge process that really doesn't need to be undertaken when really the, the life of the solar product, we've got mineral rights scattered throughout this county that we'd, we'd likely go somewhere else other than flat, hopwire land where most of these solar projects are going.
And we're retaining those mineral...
Yeah, so we retain them, we're not losing any...
So, let me ask you a question, and I think it's pretty straightforward going, but, you know, we're talking mineral rights, but from the original times that we've talked about this with Obsidian projects as discussed, is there any, any, uh, problem going forward with any of these projects? Is the development of these sites are changing relative to some of the potential uses of the ground underneath these solar panels? And if it's not for minerals, say, over the life, the twenty or twenty-five year life, if it's determined that there's other things as well that can be done on those sites, will this in any way prohibit that if it's not related to extracting minerals?
By the county, so the county only owns mineral rights, so, you know, the landowner themselves could continue to do what they wished with that land in their agreement with, you know, the company... in their agreement with, you know, the company.
Okay, well, that's what I'm wondering.
Yeah, we're not in any way seen.
Not here necessarily in the last, maybe even in the United States. But some people are raising those at their pedestals and they're planting crops and they're doing all sorts of things underneath their gardens and actually getting a secondary use off of those sites.
And on a second, just on a side note, I am currently on a work group for solar siting that involves developers of other counties who have seen a lot of solar going on. We had our first initial meeting last week. I just got an email, haven't yet read this morning, that there's gonna be a follow-up meeting very soon as the state looks to potentially change some of the solar rules when it comes to siting and offset thresholds, especially for high values. So some of that really is the website problem. But for us, it would be three hundred and twenty rule, with no exception, and then we'll give it, you know, six forty, ten things. So that's a side note that I'm involved in that process and a lot of the points that you just brought up are being discussed in that. How can we still continue to try to utilize the land and not just close it off for any other use?
And that's, I think that as we've evolved in this process, we, we had blinders on to the notion that we were gonna have the exclusive solar from now and forever. Where we actually have a finding that there's another use that we can have hand in hand on the same acre. So I think it's a really good thing.
Again, I'm going down that path just a little bit off track of this. Our planning commission did, it's kind of a department update, right? So mixed in with this topic. So our department, or sorry, our planning commission last meeting, you know, reviewed two more solar projects were approved, Maryland. But the reasons they were almost denied were because of, again, bonding, but also because of this taking away from potential other uses. And so, you know, even wildlife uses. And, you know, what it really boils down to is where financing or these companies are, you know, huge investments being taken, where the financing companies that are handling this feel comfortable. And so, you know, by raising them up and putting livestock on them, you know, there's still potential risks there. You know, we are talking high voltage kind of situations, but, and I'm using the words of the developers from that meeting, that there are some risks that they would take and obviously added cost of installation if they're gonna raise this up and have a lot higher IBs and things like that. So the value added by allowing, you know, other potential uses still to be within their boundary. We talked about fencing during that meeting as well and, you know, there's potential risk, obviously, you know, that, you know, human harm by removing fences and stuff like that. You know, that's still a requirement to fence it. So some of those things will be discussed and hopefully we'll get to a point where everybody still feels comfortable where we've got a good plan with solar, at least, you know, for our county moving forward. And, you know, the planning, we've scheduled a meeting on the fifteenth. It's open to the public. You'll be a work session setting started at, I believe, three thirty on the fifteenth with the planning commission and Jim Bailey to talk about solar, other issues with the planning commission themselves. Give you a whole, all the, do what you have to tell me.
So it's non-disturbance. The interesting thing to me is they've always talked about the life expectancy of their solar is twenty, twenty-five years. They're asking for forty years on this. So I guess, setting as commissioners and with a pilot program, maybe they ought to be guaranteed to pay seven thousand dollars. Maybe go after forty years instead of fifteen.
I think that forty, oddly, if I get the Obsidian that changed, they did send us the, you know, red line version of this document compared to the, the original Obsidian document. So I think that comes down to when they actually start construction, maybe a few years out. That buys them enough time for the life of the project, maybe thirty minutes and coming up afterwards, you know, if there is a recommendation.
So for tomorrow, will you have the, any of that actual version?
So what, what, the email, and I left my phone out just to read over the email that Drew McMahon has been the one that we're working with, New Sun, on this agreement. He's still left it as the open template for now and that we've come back later and have the actual agreement. So he just wanted kind of, he is even just to concurs that this template works. And so Jim Bailey was asked to review it and again, you know, hopefully, I'm not sure if he's planning on being on the phone, but as long as he feels comfortable with the template, I think that's what you agree to tomorrow. And then later, New Sun would come back with the actual locations and, you know. Cause it may be that, you know, some of the projects don't move forward and so they don't need all the locations that they're reviewing at this time.
So we have no action or consideration tomorrow?
No action, I don't, I don't believe other than maybe just saying that let them move forward and that this agreement is what they can take to the, their financing group to say, okay, yes, we want this agreement used on these locations.
Okay, so we scratched that. Melanie, off to tomorrow's meeting. All right. Any further questions, Darrell? I have none more. Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Darrell. That's a department update.
There you go. Next item, mental health amendment number three.
See you all.
Melanie, you forwarded this to legal counsel and you forwarded to Trace at mental health. And so we have not got a response, we have got a response back from legal counsel lately.
Yeah, he said everything was fine. It's a positive impact. I didn't hear from Trace, but I would assume that means everything's fine.
So this is an addition of, total amount, what's it?
Fifteen thousand.
Fifteen thousand dollars. Why would I create a touch base with Trace? I'll leave it on for tomorrow. I'm sure they, they want the extra fifteen thousand dollars to, just do a follow-up with her. Additions, we have support letter, airport infrastructure fund application. So that, I don't have no.
No, I saw it. Looks good.
Support letter, umbrella watershed council. We have both of those.
Yeah, and I think that's our, it's, it's something we've done in the past with RC. And we have that letter.
Yes.
It's open tomorrow.
Okay, and then department updates, Mr. Dave Berman, plus your addition, Dave, potential contract forwarding. Plus your again.
Hi, Dave.
Hi, Dave. How are you today?
Hi, lucky door. I'm going to the hospital. The hospital called me, they're needing a place to store their equipment because they're doing remodel at the hospital. And they're asking to rent a storage space from us if possible for two to three months. I'm going to say three months is covered. And they just want it for a short time so they can get in there and do their remodel and that sort of stuff. So I'm putting an agreement together. I've just, I'm not a hundred percent sure which way to go as far as costs, what kind of agreement and all of that sort of stuff. So I'd take any advice from you guys, what correction to do to do that.
Boy.
Cause we've never really used it yet.
That's, I haven't, I don't know.
Well, our, our scale, our scale starts out at four fifty, four sixty a month or whatever for a business startup and then that's place each year. On a, my own, up first, I'd like to say it's not out of ordinary for us to use our incubator buildings and clients to go outside of fostering a business. We've done this, we've written pipelines, we did it with COIC, COCC, what?
COIC.
COIC and others. So it's not out of ordinary to do this. My concern was to make sure that we're, that the private, private sectors ask first. Dave researched that. The hospital has acquired everything they can, so now they're.
Situation, you need to do it right away.
Yeah, right away. Cause it's.
So what's the step up?
Four fifty, six, six twenty-five? Eight hundred and one, thousand, one hundred and twenty-five.
You know, it's a big space. I, I guess I'm just curious if the six twenty-five or six fifty is really what we're on line. But do, my question to that man is, that's what we're doing, helping a business. It's standard now. As far as, you know, to incubate a building for a business started, this is more of a storage type thing. It's not a business, it is, I mean, it's a hospital. But do we still keep with that criteria, just those dollars amount? Or do we go for the storage compatible to storage units?
Oh, you know, I'm no, no expert in this or any information, I just have more experience with that. But I'm just looking at a utilization of the space, whether it's a business space or it's a storage space. It's, it's a space that we can't use for any other use for the next three months, which is fine. I think working with the hospital, helping them out is a good thing, particularly since they've reached out and utilized all the existing commercial space that prior, is prior to Leon. And I don't have a good figure.
Well, I'm leaning in the same place you. I think I probably ran the numbers wrong, but that comes out like sixteen or seventeen cents a square foot. In the storage business, that's probably pretty cheap per square foot.
Yeah.
Because there is storage businesses out there.
Yeah, and that's the thing that.
I have to declare I have a storage business for the record.
But on the surface, for three months, that would be, you know, just short of two thousand dollars in revenue before.
So it's a lot of six twenty-five.
I, yeah, six twenty-five, okay, so it's even a little less than that, eight thousand and seventy-five. I've been watching June, June, six on Sunday, so I'm working on it now.
I, you know, the, this discussion supported because we have one open. If we.
Yes, if some kind of day, we still have another.
We still have to build a foster business.
At the longest three months, shortest two months, so.
Yeah, and, and we, we don't know.
It usually takes that long to get in anyway, anyway, time to do it.
Well, I mean, I don't mean to jump in the commiser, but you know, it's one of the, ultimately, it's one of the biggest businesses, even though they're gonna have healthcare out of our incubator building, but we're supporting them to expand services for our system. So I, I think it's a good compatible use.
Yeah, and we, having one open, we don't know if there's a startup business out there or it can be similar to Ruby. Whenever construction starts on Red Rock, they can be interested or whatever. So, you know, it's, it's an opportunity to help the community. So what did you say, six twenty-five? I concur with that.
Yeah.
And so I guess we probably ought to, because this is very time sensitive, so we can do it today. I'll make a motion to enter into the contract as it's, as it's working on by legal counsel, contingent upon legal counsel approval, that for the hospital uses the storage at six twenty-five a month for a three-month term.
I'll say good.
Motion's been made. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Does that help you, Dave?
Yes, thank you very much.
Should get them going right away.
I'll get them going right away and then, cause they're waiting by the phone to hear. Okay, department updates, I wanna kind of go through a few of my departments. Not all of them, I'm not gonna really go into everything, but I'm gonna kind of hit on some of the things that's been going on in each department that I have, not each, but basically the airport, railroad courthouse in the annex, North Lake Annex, I'd kind of like to hit on some of all this stuff that we've been working on and questions that I've been getting a lot of, of what's going on, why this, why that. So I just wanna kind, I'm gonna start the airport. The airport, we're working on the regional solution grant. We finished that up yesterday, we, for the electrical and plumbing out there, which is much needed. We, if, even if we don't get successful on the regional solution grant, we still have to do some because we're in the middle of paving and our old plumbing, as you guys know, is right over where we're gonna pave. So we're kinda, our hands are kinda tied, so we're kinda not tied, but time, we just gotta get it done. And then we did have plumbing issue, we got that taken care of. The plumbing part that come out, we had the leak and we were flooding out there, that's all been taken care of. We finally got that wrapped up and covered back up.
It was on the freshwater side.
Yeah, freshwater, yes. And then also with this, with the regional solution grant, there's more than just the line too. It's time for us to redo the pump house down there. It's old concrete. We, we went in there, well, before my time, about six years ago and we did everything well. Old pipe bursted in there and we kinda did some damage in there and now we gotta fix it, insulation and all that too. So it's time for new, from, from the well clear to the hanger. And it's just time, just nineteen forty-three, forty-two, whatever it is. Yeah, when he was, oh, when he was in his mid twenties.
That age is you too because you're only five years younger than me.
I'm gonna be damn near ten years older than me, so. So anyway.
I'll move on.
Touche.
Yeah. And then connect apron rehab grant and project for, next week we'll be in bid, pre-bid. We'll start the pre-bid and we'll start working on it. So I'm kind of hoping all that goes in hand in hand with the plumbing, with the regional solution, if we can get it.
So Dave, can I ask you just a quick question? I don't mean to interrupt you, but knowing the sensitivity of paving over the top of the existing pipes, do we have a backup plan if A, well, I know B, we just do it and we figure out how to fund it. But if we don't know the answer to the regional solutions, when we actually need to start paving and we can get new pipe in there irregardless? I know it's not the best way to do it, but so the cover and then the paving doesn't have to be disturbed.
Yeah, so what we're looking at is if, if the timing's not right with the dollars and we're, we're, we, we can't start the plumbing until we get totally approved by the grant. You can't start work without it. Cause if we do, then it takes away, I mean, you know, we gotta have a letter received from our grant before we can start any work to get any, any burden. So what we would do, if that wasn't all settled yet, what we'd do is we'd put a casing in where we can run a line later. We would have dog lake or parties come in, dig a trench, put a conduit in, like a five-inch pipe. Then when we come down to do the pipe, then we plumb it in later.
Okay.
Either way, we're gonna, we've got to, we have to, because we don't want to tear up pavement, you know? So we've already worked on that. We'll just put in conduit and then slide in. But it has to be done. I mean, we've gotta get this plumbing done because it's every, three months we've had a leak, it just keeps breaking, it's just old.
Yeah, the regional solutions grant, if we're successful, we don't even review those. I said on regional solutions team, our committee or whatever, until July twenty-fourth, I believe, or sometime in July. So that's when we'll be reviewing all the.
Well, I'll kind of roll it together. If timing's right, this will be perfect if we can.
But I guess where I'm going, that's how important it is, get that trench, get the compaction and have that pipe underneath it. Then if we're successful, great. And we're not successful, we gotta look at plan B. I would say a plan B would be very positive, have that discussion during budget time. We don't, we do not have open request, but for the budget committee and the board of commissioners, that if there is any dollars come available, minimum, we need to look at that plumbing side of it. So, so depending on where our contingency comes down, that kind of stuff.
Right, yeah, right now it's the big half of what we wanted to be in there.
And then onto the railroad. Railroad is, in my, my opinion, my words, is awesome right now. It's just, it's running smooth, no hiccups. It's just, it's just kind of relaxing and kind of a, I don't know, it's just been really good. So as far as operation is moving around, the reason. So as far as operation is moving around, regional solution grant with them for the bridges, got material order, they're slowly working on it. We've been doing our reports, so things have been, A, okay, but we're really proud of the new operators. They're very informational, they keep us in the loop. They, if there's any hiccups, calls. They're, well, when they're running smooth, they let us know when they're running smooth, so they're really, really good, so... The North Lake Annex, the bathroom remodel has been completed up there. It's all new, it's all ADA, up there, it's really nice. We had Steve Valley do it, or Daniel Scott, and he did a great job. People's called me, but thank you. It's pretty good. Then we have, we're kind of on a mix up with Flowery Park, the Wi-Fi situation up there. We're getting an impression that, you know, they want us to do more than what we can allow as far as connecting to, they want, they kind of want to connect to our server, but they can't, tied down, so I need to get back there to, you know, we had a meeting on it and we, when Denise was here.
Well, we've met, again, on it, and Melanie, which manages that contract with our IT providers, it was like absolutely not.
Right, exactly.
I mean, that's the simple answer.
But we're still getting, Commissioner Kessler is still getting phone calls from Mr. Flowery, and so I get calls from Commissioner Kessler saying, well, they want to meet with us, or he, I need to call Mr. Flowery. Well, we've already, we've already told him that, so I guess...
Well, and it's unfortunate that Mr. Kessler's not here today, so we can have a discussion with this, I mean, it's, and you know, Dave, but I know you still get stuck in the middle. It's crystal clear, and Melanie knows, we were going to try and accommodate with some space for a need that he perceived that he had relative to the park and the security. That's all. We're not going to do anything else.
We can't.
We can't, and we, I guess what we need to do today, though, is somehow give Dave some relief from, from these calls and the discussion around requests to go do more and contact him and try and, and the only way we can do it, send a meeting where the whole board's here, and you're here, and Melanie's here, and we can bring in our IT folks, just for once and for all.
Oh, well, fairly simple, I think. I shouldn't use that word. Have you talked to Mr. Flowery?
I have, I have not. Well, not, not since we told him.
Well, why don't we have our contract manager send a very nice letter, Mr. Flowery, sorry that through our policy procedures and our security, we're not allowed, we're not being able to allow this, they could use, sorry that we can't be accommodating that way. It's done and over, but I mean...
Yeah?
Go ahead, Melanie.
I sent that letter just like that a couple of months ago when I started.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I can, I can resend it if that would help, but we sent...
Well, I think, in my opinion, I think we should call Mr. Flowery, because I might actually hear this straight from Mr. Flowery. This is secondhand, and Commissioner Kessler's asking me to contact him.
So maybe Melanie can just talk to Commissioner Kessler and ask him what he is proposing.
Sure.
And we can bring it back to us if, no, there's nothing to bring back, but we just need to go to the source of you getting questioned and being asked to view something that we can't do, so...
Okay. And then I was talking to Jay Collins. He was saying mental health is going to be moving partially out of the Annex over to the Health District office at some point. He hadn't given me no time or dates. I just, as far as the North Lake Annex, they're not moving completely out, but they'll free some of the office space up back up, but they're not, they're not shuffling offices so much to accommodate mental health, veteran service, community, community correction.
And I think we need to kind of stay tuned on that, Dave. I spent quite a bit of time with Carl Shumway, the chair of the Health District up there on Friday, and he's, they're developing a great relationship with Charlie down here with the Health District down here. And that is, I think, in the works, they haven't concluded anything, so I think we'll just have to kind of stay tuned, get our ear to the ground on that.
Dave, I think it's a great opportunity, that materializes for you, you, us, you to bring something to us, that this is what's going to be the MOU or whatever with wellness center and with the Annex, you know, they'll use this office these days or whatever, when we get it in writing, because it's just continued to grow by people assuming they can do what we've been very accommodating, but I think it's to the point that it's taken our employees' time and your time, is this might be a great opportunity to say, okay, we're going to be moving half out of this. This is, it's Lake County Services first, and that's, that's what Annex is for. So we want wellness to be all, there's stuff in there. Also, we don't want to displace our veterans person or sheriff's side or, or whatever. Yeah, we got to, I think it's an opportunity for you to just say, okay, we're getting this in writing, because whenever we contracted with, like, the hospital for mental health, it was sort of, yeah, we'll give you space, but it's great that they're getting more services up there, and it's great they're going to be expanding out there. It's just time that we clean it up.
Well, I think you're exactly right, and I think some discussion with Charlie relative to what he's been discussing with the board up there and their expansion, potential expansion. I'd be totally wrong to try and sit here and talk about what the Health District up there is planning and what they, but I think that we could get a clear view, and then as Commissioner Warner says, we could, if there's still a desire to use some of the space there, because I didn't get the idea that there'd still be a use of space, but I didn't ask that question either. I just, I got the idea that services would move over to a new, very accommodating space within the Health District office, but I don't know.
Well, and then on top of all, just want to hit on Steve Valley. He's still doing a very good job over there. He's really, he's got that place looking ahead. I don't have to check, you know, I do check in, but it's, you know, it's, every time I do, it's everything's done. He's a thinker and he gets stuff done, so it's...
I've been impressed, every time I've been there.
Yeah.
Something as, as small as preparing for snow plowing of the bumpers and everything, putting little red flags there so that there are all these, know where those are at, so you don't tear up a piece of concrete, snow plowing, so on, so...
So speaking of that, Friday, I was up there, and I actually went to the Annex, and there was a fair number of rings around, but there, you know, public health was closed for, I think, to today or something, but I went in the one door and really have, you know, I didn't want to intrude, the sound isn't, you know, the greatest, but there were a couple offices being used, and I thought, you know, there were clients there, and so I didn't, you know, wait around. But I was going to see Tom, you know, somebody in the deputy sheriff office, but no one was there. But I did notice on that back where we did the new walkway, and I know originally it got dinged up right off the bat, but it's, it's looking, the surface on it, is, is there anything we can do?
We just put a, there's a sealer you can put on, that's about all you can, you can't. I mean, I think they have a double epoxy you can put on it. I mean, yes, there is something, we just need to determine what...
Well, I mean, there's a sizable piece at the top. Well, right when you walk off the parking lot out there, there's a large piece, the top's gone, so, I mean, sealing it, I just wondered whoever we had do it just a little while back, if there's anything they kind of guaranteed.
Well, it was our fault.
Oh, okay. So...
They were just throwing rocks all down on top of it.
Okay, so we can't pave over the to, or cement over the top?
No, I mean, maybe there's something out there. I think there is a sealer out there, but I don't know if it, I think, name it, we can just seal it, keep it from chipping away more.
Okay. I've done a little more under, too. Just, yeah.
Yeah, that's what it started, that they, they had the rocks all, all the way down on top of it.
Okay.
So that's what we're going to do. So anyway, the Annex is looking good. Now I'm going to courthouse a little bit. I don't know if you guys drove by on this corner out here, but the Don Robinson Bell project is on its way about that. It's looking really nice. I don't know if you guys really noticed it, but...
Oh, yeah.
We did make...
I drove up on it this morning.
We did make a few changes on as far as the bell pads, we were going to do one solid bench, and actually Casey, Thor, and Rob said, this would be very, would you be willing to do this? No change in cost, just, I looked at it, because the pad we had on there was so big, the uniform of the bells sitting on it would look funny, because it's just bad, and they don't know if we do this, and I'm glad we, I'm glad they brought up our attention, because Don Robinson came by and was very happy with the change that we did, and me, too, as well. So if you go out there and look at it, it's...
Oh, it's looking nice. Yeah, I actually did go look at this one.
Yeah. I'm very happy with it so far, so... And then I want to kind of hit on the bathroom thing, too, for what's going on. We did, I wanted to get some repairs on the smell. We did have a bad vent that was coming in that girl's bathroom, and it was nasty. I mean, and I, I had a plumber coming a couple times, you know, and it was a P trap. Well, what we did, they have these trap things, they're called, I can't remember the name, but they're a trap thing you just put in the base, on the top of it, and ever since we've put that in, we haven't had no issues. So we solved that. As far as putting fans in, I think is a great idea, but also I want to hit on our janitorial, too. We're kind of lacking on janitorial now, some changes have been done, and I think we kind of need to hit on janitorial, too, with some of that, you know, we might do a little more janitorial during the day somehow with the bathrooms, you know, especially up there, because they do get a lot of use. I mean, I totally get where the clerk is coming from, because it does get well-used. So I just wanted to say, you know, I think with janitorial and with fans, that would help that issue. As far as the other side of it, we'll get together and discuss that. But as far as the cleanliness and that, it's just little things that we need to do better for, you know, far as my janitorial and all that, so I think that would help, too. And right now, with some of the things that we're kind of lacking on the janitorial side, just with the changes the last...
Well, I think, Dave, quite honestly, I like the idea of doing some daytime janitorial, but the problem I think we're going to run into is you never know when somebody's not going to care about what happens out there.
The bathroom.
So, you know, it's just, you run into that unfortunately almost everywhere, and when you least expect it, someone's going in and just, very, so, very bad.
Well, that's kind of all I have.
No, I, I mean, I guess, I guess where I'm at is if the bathrooms, their normal use of the day, get bad, then there would be a call down, or there's some employee responsibilities to be proactive, and I'm not saying they need to clean them, but make some people aware that will take care of that. There's, I just don't see any way that we can, every day, get down there checking that, and it's not an everyday problem.
Well, that was my point. I think it's good that we recognize things don't just happen by the end of work, that it would be nice to be able to do something during the day, but what day do you do something? We don't know, and we can't afford to have someone that's on just four of the times that there's a need.
And usually we do do that. I mean, usually...
Right.
There has been times where I get a phone call...
I guess that's what we're on doing.
And that's, that's the way it's been since I've been here. If it gets nasty down there, I'll get a phone call, someone comes in, hey, they have a bathroom, they've got down there, they didn't take care of it. I mean, that's, but that, that vent, that kind of, that was bad. I mean, that's something we couldn't figure out, even had the plumber come down, and he said this, this, well, that didn't work, and finally, actually, the, our...
Building Fisher.
Building Fisher goes, hey, try this. This is what we did here. We worked, and we haven't had problems since, so... Anyway, that's all I got. You have any questions, concerns, or I open that one up?
No, well, yeah. I noticed you've been mentioning a lot here. I was going to give you a suggestion on how you might rid yourself of that. You have to call it a straight razor, some shape and curve.
I need to, but I'm ready, I don't have any idea of it.
Can I ask a question about the Wi-Fi in Christmas Valley? I just had a thought. I don't know, I don't know anything about it, this is the first time I've heard of it, but I'm assuming that Flowery is, would like to have Wi-Fi for the park? Is that what he's looking for?
No.
No, okay, then never mind, a public access.
He's looking for a security.
Oh, for security, okay.
Yeah, the Wi-Fi part, that is fine. We agreed on that, that he could use, what is it, whatever you call it, for Wi-Fi. He can get, use his, he can bring in Wi-Fi and protect it in our building.
Right, we gave him the space.
He should have access to do it.
His Wi-Fi, it's the, he wanted to get in our service so he can do security and all that.
I wonder if he has spoken with Nathan Church, because Nathan is kind of the go-to guy out there for wireless, just a suggestion, when you have your conversation and let him know again that, but that Nathan is available, I'm sure he must know about Nathan, and he's very good.
Well, Ginger, to your point, Mr. Flowery, I think, has only been talking to Kim Kessler, so I would think if anybody would be able to have told him that.
Right, right.
But we don't know what their...
Yeah, exactly, I understand. But I was just thinking, for your benefit, if you have to do your letter again or whatever, sometimes it's easier to soften them below when you have another suggestion for them. I just thought of, thought of that, because I think Nathan could help him out with that.
Okay. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Dave. Thanks for all you're doing.
Melanie, you have, working on the table, that one, and let Dave just go with that tomorrow. You have liaise on updates on Wednesday instead of Tuesday. We usually do liaise and updates on our work session.
Oh, sorry.
I thank you for all here tomorrow. It'd be good to have you tomorrow.
Okay.
And I agree with you, but I have to get to have you.
So that's one we'll carry forward for tomorrow. Back to the two letters. One's the business organ, regional infrastructure, the other one's Mr. Kenyon. And that's, only has one commissioner seeing the signature on that, is that, the way we want to do that.
I can change that. That's how Marcy sent it to me.
And probably, because last year I was the chair, but it should be all three of us.
Okay, I can fix that.
So...
Well, that, it's all around the good strategy, but it still needs to be...
I haven't, I haven't fully read through it, Commissioner, and I'm fine with your signature on it. I just wanted to make sure that the letter was representative of what, what we needed.
Well, you know, I have a right of view here, and I'll give it, you know, if there's a change or something.
Okay.
And I think, you know, I don't know.
This other one's ready to sign, correct?
Um, I believe so.
So just the copy you lost signed that you gave me, or you have another copy?
I have another copy on letterhead. It's something they drafted very quickly on Friday, because it's time-sensitive, but you guys might want to look it over and see if it's okay.
Yeah, the, we need, this one's already time-sensitive. Did Ann add this into yesterday's application, or we can send it in?
I don't know if she sent it or not. It hasn't been signed, so I don't, I would assume she...
So I would say she has, okay. Give me that copy and I'll sign it. What's that? That should be it. We can adjourn at ten thirty.